So the Town of Postonkale Planning Board Meeting for July 2nd is now in session. We all stand for the budget minutes. First on the agenda, the meeting minutes, um, June 4th maybe? Let's see if we have a chance to review. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Question by Steve, second by Ricky, all in favor? Aye. Nays? Aye. One extent, uh, extension. So, Dr. June 4th meeting minutes approved as written? First item on the agenda, uh, Orsini's, uh, the public hearing is still open for this. Wanted to run it by the board to send them a letter stating that we're gonna close the public hearing. Put the head of the board here.
I agree.
Ready? We will send the letter out and close the public hearing and, uh, see what they want to do from there.
At this point, should we just close it? Because if they're gonna come in with anything new for their application, we should re-notify property owners, right? It's been so long, I don't know.
You can close it, still send the letter telling them we're gonna take them off.
Just because if they come back in, I feel like everybody else should have.
Yeah. Yeah, that's your point, so that's what we'll do.
You have to make a motion if you're gonna do that.
Okay. You want to make a motion, Steve?
I'll make a motion to close it.
Everybody wants to say it.
Everybody in favor, any nays? Do you want to do a roll count on this, or is everybody in favor of closing? Okay. Second. And all in favor, we're good, so we can close this. Sorry. Next on the agenda is, uh, Patrick Fink for his subdivision. They have a public hearing for this tonight. Do you want to, um, flag what you're doing again briefly?
Just breaking off the excess land, uh, so it doesn't, if I decide to sell the house, it doesn't go anywhere. Keep the family land.
Okay. Um, so, public hearing, it's open. Anybody that has any comments, if you wanna come up, say on the podium, give me a couple minutes, state your name, where you live. Does anybody have any comments on this?
No comments? I, I don't know anything about it, I mean, what, what's it about?
A subdivision?
A subdivision, yeah. Whereabout, where you?
Oh, yeah.
How many pounds?
None, none. It's simple.
It's just separating a piece of his property or his house, separate from the rest of his property?
Yeah.
Make a motion to close the, uh, public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
First name, please, second one. Um, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Close. None. Public hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Glad you'd be here.
You're not done yet.
Of course, don't you?
You're not done yet.
Not done yet.
Oh, sorry.
Two more. It's just a public hearing.
I was having fun. Go ahead and hear. We're still gonna approve that on the speeding ticket or something, sitting here at your end.
So we're gonna do seeker on this, so this is a listed fraction. Uh, let's see, he's filled out paperwork here, the short form. So, the agency, the fraction, it's all filled out, contribution, something's on the right. Character, yes. No change of traffic. Okay. This looks like post action management, no? Okay. So you're not monitoring your flood plan according to the summary report, also agrees with that.
You gotta go through the question. Yeah, type in. That's the news of them.
There we go. Those actions create a material conflict with the adopted land use planners' zoning regulations?
No.
Those actions result in changing use of intensity of the use of the land?
No.
Those actions impair a character or quality of existing community?
No.
Those actions have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will those actions result in an adverse change in existing levels of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit? Like, no?
No.
Will those actions cause an increase in use of energy? And if it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will those actions impact existing public or private water, other than private wastewater?
No.
Those actions impair the character, the quality, important historical, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will those actions result in an adverse change in natural resource?
No.
Will those actions result in increased potential of erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Those actions create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Based on, yeah. Based on information now, as well, any support, those actions may result in one more potential large significant adverse impacts, and environmental impact statement is required. Don't check that one. By the support, those actions would not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Right.
Mainly agency, it's the Town, first of all, Town Board.
Do a motion and a vote on that, negative declaration.
I'll make a motion for a negative declaration.
So second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Somebody have any questions on the submission of the subdivision?
No.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Excepted and approved?
Excepted and approved. No our seconds, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Done. Approved?
Now you're good.
Now you're done. I'm not hurt. It's not like I got a ticket.
Some people in the back, yeah? Can you hear?
I'm sorry, I can't talk to the other. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Callahan Industries submitted a special use application to renew their mining permit. We opened a public hearing for this. We're a public hearing, uh, the hearing on the African Callahan Industries, 620 Main Avenue Wine and Scale, special use permit for natural products extraction and reclamation under the provisions of 150-68 of the Land Use Code of the Town of Postonkale. Said mine is in, is a continuation of previously approved mine located in the Town of Postonkale Natural Products District. The public hearing is open for this. Again, if anybody has any comments, please come up and vote him, state your name, where you live. And try to keep it, uh, two minutes max, anyways. Anybody wanna comment?
I'd like to know how, how, their postal of my property is, I wanna know where they're gonna be moving.
Can somebody from Callahan give a brief?
Hey, um, I'm Jeff Lang, resigned consultant with the mining consultants for Callahan. I'm not sure where your property is, so I can't speak.
She's across from Dennis Road, across from Dennis Road. On the player's corner.
Dennis, 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 241.
This is, this is not Callahan, this is Perry Brothers, head over in here, um, Dennis Road.
Dennis, 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 Dennis.
This is Dennis, this is 66 years. They're basically at the limits of excavation through here, the mining excavation limits are just line here. We're staying back a minimum of 50 feet from top of line and it's in excess of 50 years, well, about 100.
If I can hear them, 'cause they're getting close to.
Right, it has been permitted for 40 plus years in there, they haven't actually been excavating there, but it is proceeding closer and closer as excavation.
Do they show a right of way? Do they show a right of way on the side of her property? There was, uh.
See, this is the property line here, this is the excavation.
Yeah.
So this is the last bit really to be excavated.
Okay, but the base, you know, there's no right of way where you could come out alongside of her property?
No, it's good, no, it'll always be, always through the main access upon this. Nothing's gonna come out of this thing.
Never, never out of. Well, there was questions on her deed a long time ago, right? That there was a right of way? Maybe this mark there?
No, no plans for anything like that, still, the existing, actually, the processing plant is over near 66 and everything's really processed anyway.
Well, it's, oh. You won't come up and ask me questions? We'd love to have you, or just.
Yeah, the director, the director of the board. He'll answer.
Yeah, I'll answer, any questions, have you asked me about what?
Can we get just a brief, uh, introduction to what we are presenting here today? Not everybody's been here in the past.
Right, this is, uh, the renewal of the special use permit, actually, Fort Callahan's postal portion of their property. Uh, the site has actually been in operation for, I think, about 60-something years, I first worked there about 40 years ago. And it really is just, first, you know, continuing to move outwards to the approved mining limits. Um, it's just that these areas are, are, are new in the sense that they weren't excavated before, but they've been approved for some 45 or 50 years, actually, and they represent the, the final mining limits of the mine, so we're just getting to that, that level.
This is Snyder's Corners Road.
This is Snyder's Corners Road here, this is 66. Yes. Snyder's Corners Road is here. Looks like this, this is Neldor Road here. Yes, okay. Yeah, okay, so you really, I mean, this is an out parcel, this is not owned by Callahan, so that's not gonna be excavated. So really, you're pretty much almost at those limits right now. This area here can still be mined, but that's the last bit. Uh, and that's gonna be above water, and then below water is the pond is expanded from this area. Yes.
Is this, what is this?
This is the crest, the existing crest line, at the top of the active mine face right now. And these are the limits with which D C has approved excavation too.
And how much deeper can it go?
Well, they're gonna go down to roughly this grade here, so it's about 30 feet lower in this area, but this pond is, is permitted to expand, so there will be what we term sub 8 U S excavation in there, the expansion of the pond in this area, there'll be a pond over here, large pond out here, and then the final pond over in the plant area, so four separate ponds.
This is already there, right?
Yes.
And it's not?
The, the final pond in the plant area has not been excavated yet, that's the last one, that's over. It's in North Greenbush. Yes.
It's on the other side of the bridge.
Yes. You're welcome.
You have plans for after the gravel's mined out?
Well, it's planned to be reclaimed to grassland and, and pond area, uh, as far as, and it's subject to local law, as far as what it's.
Make a heck of a golf course or something, you know? I mean, I'm just thinking.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but nothing is a developing golf course, so I really can't speak for that.
You know, I mean, I've, I've lived here all my life, so that's, I've played in that gravel pit all my life, you know, I spent a lot of time over there. And it's a beautiful place, always was, you know?
It's a nice parcel.
Yeah.
Is there any more danger to the water level?
No, what happens is, really, the water level doesn't change as you excavate, it's just, uh, it's, it's so permeable that it just kinda, you, you pull material out, put it up on the side, let it be water, but the pond level stays roughly the same. Now, the purpose of the four ponds is to actually let it kinda step down, because there is a natural gradient, which we wanna kinda replicate with over reclamation time, which if you put one great big pond in there, there's more material that could be excavated, but it would have a perpetual overflow at the far west end, and we don't wanna see that, because it would be an overflow to the mining scale, where it's this way, it's self-contained, it's internally draining throughout the life of the mine and, and post-excavation.
Years ago, a lot, all the people on, was in 51, I don't think 51, 55, but where Vanderheiden, those people all, did new wells, so much mess at the time.
That, that, uh, that's up in the hard tan area, it's really not the sandy gravel, so it would probably be.
But it was, it started, all the water from, started after, they really started going, gone whole with it.
Well, there's, it, as far as what could happen down the road, there's really no additional excavation in that area, including the sub-excavation, that was probably prior to D C even administering mining permits back in the early 60s, I imagine that that was probably even when that was initially started. D C didn't institute the mine land reclamation law until 1975, so it was kinda, you know, really not a permitted process at that point, but it has been subject to a, a full seeker review since that time, and, and this mining limits as proposed are just what's been approved already by D C, and there is no proposal to change that. It's just a renewal of the existing permit.
And this would be no effect for all, all the people on the road?
No, it should not be. I can't speak to what happened 60-something years ago, but again, D C wasn't looking at the process at this point, but they've been looking at it with a hard look for 49 years now, and, uh.
Are you gonna go beyond the crest of the hill and take the gravel, or are you gonna stop at the crest?
What do you mean?
Along 60s, or along Snyder's Corners Road, like, we can see the gravel pit is just right up the hill at the top.
Right.
And there's still trees going up to there, but are you gonna continue drawing that gravel away?
Well, if you wanna, you wanna look at this map, maybe, you can, and, and you can see, this is the existing crest line, right here, existing mine crest. Okay? And these are the limits of excavation, the, the colored line here. So we will go out to the limits of excavation, but these, as far as, not past that, so this is Snyder's Corners. We've reached the limits through here.
Yep, and then where is Fury Road?
That's over here.
Okay, Fury Road, yeah. All right, so, so along here, you're.
This, this, this is not Callahan, this is, this is a separate permit.
All right.
But, but then. So that's where Costopas's place was, in here, below Pine Bowl Road?
Pine Bowl's over.
Pine Bowl? Pine Bowl's over here.
Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, that's Pine Bowl here.
This should be Pine Bowl Road, that's down here on the straightaway. Right, this, so this, this is, this is Perry's down here?
This is Perry.
That's the old Costopas place there, that actually has been destroyed and taken out.
Well, that's down on the corner more, isn't it?
This is Fury Road.
Fury Road's over here, right, down on, on the bend. And there was a whole, there was a whole pit here.
Right, that's the pit here.
And that is not part of the Callahan application. Uh, this, this is, this is the limits, right here, this orange line, it comes around, and that is what has been permitted to pass, and that's what, what we're looking to do now is continue that.
And where does the power line cross, 766?
Oh, the power lines up here more, that's over.
Oh, wow, there's scales.
Now at Greenbush.
All right, um, yeah, it must be like label on here, probably.
This is the plant area over here.
Yep, yep.
So, they're looking at, it's this right here.
So Dennis Road is, is where? Dennis Road, Dennis Road is right in this area, this is Neldor here, okay?
That's Neldor.
So, Pine Bowl, or, I mean, uh, Pine Bowl.
Dennis is up here.
Dennis Road is up here, yeah, and, and you have reached the extent of how far you're cutting him?
No, we, this, we, this is where the limits are right now, and they are permitted to go to this line here, but this is the property line, this is a 50-foot step back here, and in excess of 50 feet in this area here.
And so this must be your most property right here, that house, so that, and that trailer, and the trailer, yeah.
So, right, so, this, this black line is?
That's the property line.
The property line, right through the house.
Well. It's also taken from a tax map. They have a 50-foot buffer between the property line.
Wherever the property line would be, we would.
So, not that we'll even see it, but that hill will be gone, basically.
The hill will eventually be, yes, this area, and this will be reclaimed to grassland and the pond area out here. And then this stays in place and blocks it from the main pit, which is over in here, and the, and the process and plant will be out. So this, this is not, uh, there's no real change in the grade proposed, or this is a hard tan area, so that's how that be excavated really below it is right now.
This is my family's property right here, and I was, of the impression that we own down the back of this field, where this is here, where your posted signs are now, but, okay, you, this is here now going through the house.
This is an upline here, this is an upline here, and this is the tax map that's been, basically the map that's been approved for.
If you go by the, the line, the gradient line or whatever, it's kinda up on the hill yet, you know? By looks of that, anyway, according to the.
Well, we had, we had a licensed surveyor, um, Brian Holbrother out there has actually staked that, so this is, this is, again, is the renewal map, the map has been permitted for, for decades, in fact, no, no need to change, but there is certainly a property line that has been located and, and Holbrother has staked that, so. And, and we will stay a minimum of 50 feet back from the state.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, what is the reclaiming slope after, is it all reclaimed, what's the slope on that?
Maximum of one vertical and two horizontal, um, but it is less in certain areas, because the natural landform where you have a glacial till or a hard pin, really kinda precludes you from wanting to excavate any, any trouble.
Well, I'm talking most aggregate, like, so it's one on two?
One on two.
Yeah.
That's state law, too.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have any questions? No? And how, how far back on a, on a, on a pin is the normal offset?
What's that first, before?
Un, undisturbed.
50 feet in, in Postonkale, 25 feet more than state law, so Postonkale is.
Undisturbed, like, 50.
Well, okay.
Okay. No other comments? Thank you, everybody. I've got one more question to the public hearing.
I'll make a motion. First. I'll make a motion.
Detective Steve made a motion, closes it, public hearing, Jeff second. All in favor? Opposed? Done. Public hearing is closed. It's a secret one.
I'm sorry, I'm trying hard.
Did you submit a short one?
The seeker. Um, no, we didn't submit the short one, because seeker was already studied under various. Um, no, we didn't submit the short one, because Seeder's already studied under various insurance here, including the two thousand eight special use permit. So what we have typically done is, we just reaffirm the prior net debt. And that, because the impacts haven't changed, it's the same project, and that's how we handle it.
So you can go through part two. Okay. And nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
So ask the questions and make the motions. It's an uncoordinated action. D E C is doing their own work, and they're doing progress.
So we're going to do the part two. Impact assessment for this. Item one, would prosaction create a material conflict to the adopted land use or plan or zoning regulations? Prosaction result in changing the use intensity of the use of the land? Prosaction impair the character or quality of existing community? Would prosaction have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Would prosaction result in adverse change in existing level of traffic? Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy? Would prosaction impact the existing private or public water supplies, or public or private wastewater? Prosaction impair the character or quality of the important historic aesthetic reasons, architectural? No. Would prosaction result in adverse change in natural resources? Prosaction result in increase in potential erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Prosaction create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? This box determined based on the information about being supported, Dr. James, the prosaction will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact.
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
Negative.
Okay. Planting board is, there's no lead agency here. Uh, first of all, planting board is lead agency. We have a second for the motion? Yep, second, all favor? Aye. Oppose? See, we're done. Steph, I'm going to need a form for that after the meeting. Okay. Our subdivision.
We'll get to it.
Approve the renewal.
Approve the renewal. Yeah, assuming you approve the approval.
Questions here? Does the board have any questions on the renewal?
I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal.
Is that based on D E C approval?
Oh, yeah, you want, we discussed this. You want to put a contingent on D E C's approval?
Right.
So, once you get your permit from D E C, obviously you can't go without them anyway, but our approval...
Yeah, typically, I think what we've done was run concurrent with the D E C mining permit, which is...
Yeah, we're operating under Sabbath status right now, because it's...
When did we, it's December?
We submitted back in November, and then it really fired technically in December twenty-three, but it's Sabbath.
So we can, you can do it that way. I don't know if you want to say it's just run concurrent with the D E C permit or put it for December, maybe.
Or to match the D E C's...
Yeah, we can match that one.
Batch D E C's.
Yeah, if you never get D E C's approval, you don't have our approval.
Right.
Contingent on.
Absolutely.
So, do you have another?
I guess I'll amend the motion, too. Are we going to run concurrent or we're going to run?
We ran it concurrent in the past, and now we're changing it.
No, we're not.
No, we are not.
Okay.
They're still waiting on it. When are you expecting the other?
That's the funny thing with D E C.
They don't want it on time.
All we're saying is, we're all proven.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the S U P running concurrent with the D E C permit, which they will be receiving at some point, contingent upon their receivable, or receiving their D E C permit.
Yes. There are a second?
There's a lot of words on us.
There are seconds, all in favor? Aye. Aye, oppose? No. I think they're good. Next on the agenda is an applicant from Perry Brothers, for a minor subdivision application to divide off six point eight acres from a hundred and fifty-six acre parcel with the double-same family home. Property's located off Don'tland Beach Road. Who's here to represent this? You come up and agree what you want to do?
Yeah, well, my son, I own, love Perry Brothers, saying owner, he's my son, David.
He's going to explain it.
Yeah. So, as my father's rich, Barry, he's one of, one of the owners of Perry Brothers, saying family home. I'm his older son, David. We're looking to, my wife and I and two kids, we're looking to build a home off of Alcalco Vito. It's in front of the planting board, if anybody wants to come up and look at it and kind of show them that they has involved. If you're interested, if anybody needs to... So that's basically it. The home is going to take many years to do. It's kind of a labor of love, like probably most of us in the room are doing. And that's kind of what we're here to do today.
All right, your question. Board have any questions?
Yeah, there's some steep slopes in the house, about six point eight acres, if you know what the maximum slopes are. How would that affect your planning?
Yeah, so it is extremely steep in, in the area where Alcalco Vito kind of winds around. I have zero intention of removing any of those trees along those slope areas. I love them. I think they give privacy to a home, so my goal is to not clear any, hardly any trees, just enough to get a driveway up, kind of on the north end of the property. Is, the grade kind of slopes a little gradual on one end, and looking to build a driveway up in there, and there's a flat, flat soil area on top.
So you're planning to build the house in a flat, flat?
Yes, yes. So the acreage is about six point eight. I'm only, there's probably only an acre and a half that's actually usable there, because of the geography, but I kind of like that, because it kind of shields everything from the road and the house up.
It slopes over fifteen percent.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, I'm looking to build on the flat area and have the driveway come up.
No, it looks like a beautiful spot.
That's my hope.
Classifying this and setting a little...
Okay. Does the board have any other questions, first? Anybody else? Okay. Cross call is the hearing of accepting it as a minor subdivision. So accepting this as a minor subdivision? We'll have a public hearing on this for the next meeting? Send out applications.
So public hearing for the next Tuesday, or month?
It'll be August.
August. Do we need to do anything in preparation for that, or?
Not unless there's any other information the board wants them to break.
The tax information is on the application, obviously, so if you need any, just reach out to...
August sixth. The sixth of August.
Thank you.
First Tuesday, August sixth, we need to make a motion to class right.
That's how you, I think that's a good way to go.
I'll make a motion to class if I have a question.
Oh, so...
And I have a second?
I'll say.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? No. It's a minor subdivision. And public hearing will be August sixth. We'll see how it pans.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. That's it for the agenda. So any other items the board like to bring up tonight? Questions, comments?
A question. We talked after the last meeting about the girl cat.
Yes.
I've noticed now that there, today, or yesterday, there was a dead cat on the side of the road. Now, a cat wandered around my property. I'm wondering if it's escaping from there, or, you know?
I...
Is there any permitting necessary for this, or what's going on?
My best is information on the building code enforcement officer.
Okay.
And the next step would have to come from him. There's really nothing that I can see that this board can do.
Okay, I was wondering whether there needed to be any permitting for the business that was now established for me to...
Again, this is best to the code enforcement officer. It's, that's his area.
And if somebody has a complaint, they need to go down to the town and write a, and write a formal...
Has to be a written complaint.
There's no more calling and having him run around. You don't have to deal with that, because a lot of people can't come in when, I was here...
But that's the way, that's the way it's written.
Written, right.
And as it stands right now...
Town office is open on Saturdays, right, Tom? Is it not? So I work long hours, I can still make it down here on a Saturday. There's no excuse.
As it stands right now...
Okay, because I'm concerned, because in the past, when businesses opened in houses or in homes, there was a, either a permitting process or variance required in order to get that. So that's where my questions are coming from.
And that's, I think, that's Tracy's.
That's Tracy, right.
Code enforcement officer is going to implement that?
Okay, if you can.
If somebody wants to follow it.
Thank you, Bob. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have a concern regarding the Cooper Hill subdivision. The west end of the property, where there's a gravel bank, and there's an adjoining access road for a facility that sits above that property. Okay, my recollection that we had approved a slope at that end of the property and not an abrupt bank. So what you have there now is an abrupt bank, preparing to fifty feet high. It looks like it may be under mining, that neighboring road.
It's also Tracy.
Hey, you brought it to...
I have brought to Tracy that one thing before the board.
Again, we can't do anything until somebody brings it to us to...
I'll discuss it with Tracy then, and just so the board knows.
Sure.
It looks like they're using that in their subdivision.
Yeah.
As still for the other houses.
Obviously, it's a cheap source of gravel right in hand. Why wouldn't they use it? But there's a neighboring road that's just fifty feet above.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. I mean, legally, they can use the gravel that's on the property. But they have to use it on their property, they can't...
Yeah, they can't ship it off and take it and use it.
No, the law is expected to conform to the drawings that we approved.
Right.
It's possible they're in violation of those, and Tracy would have to investigate that and issue a violation.
We'll discuss with Tracy's talk. Then he can bring it to us.
We have no enforcement authority without him taking action.
Complication could be that that property has been sold, so the building belongs to, should be all...
Surprise, surprise.
Because they bought two lots.
Yes, two lots, right. One for his village.
One for the goats, but that...
Yeah, I really liked his goats.
That was none of our business.
Anybody else? One minor thing on the bottom of here, Vicki and I are draping, swapping dates for going to the town board. Anything else to come forth? Anyone make a motion for a meeting?
I'm thinking. Are you making the motion, or?
No, I said, I think anybody wanted to.
I'll make it.
First one for the meeting, there are a second?
Come on, you can second on my wall, but...
Eight seconds, all in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned at seven forty-one.
Comprehensive plan. And we had our mini thick-off meeting. They says that they were going to edit what we've given them. I'd like to see your copy of that stuff there.
So did you guys email it to your, like, five day...
Send it right over with the... Yeah, I think I can, but I can't make it on the other side.
Okay, so I will send it on, send it down, and have us... On the...
I just, I think I have it coordinated, so it's necessary.